Okay, so good morning, everyone. Today is Monday, March 22, 2021. Time is 11:01 a.m. This is our weekly Commissioner's Status Update. Attending are Commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Philios. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. I am going to move the order a little bit, so we'll take up item number three first, and I'm going to take up item number one last, so that Les Wigan can move right into public comment. So item number three, Budget Input Process, a potential action item. Okay. I'm indicated for this, and the reason I brought it up is that it seems that with the level of detail that's being required for this year's budget, that is to say, in preparation for the fiscal '22, we have department heads that are, if I can be blunt, flipping out over the level of detail and the time that's required. And a couple of us have discussed it with Nancy Plouffe, who I think legitimate-
Hi, Sandy. Just everybody on the phone, mute yourselves and tell your item, please.
Okay.
And so, and I think Nancy made a good point in bringing up the fact that there was a level of detail that sometimes we don't get, that we might need access to, so that we can question certain expenditures. And so I guess I'm going to put this out there. I guess, Deana, I'm going to have to ask you for your comment, and then Nancy's perhaps, and we'll go from there. How's that?
So, thanks for bringing this up. We received direction to dig into-
Is it easier if you say it? Do you want to say it?
Yeah, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah. So when we kicked off the budget process, we were directed to dig into the detail, so that the Commissioners could have insight into what's actually in the budget. We know by looking backward and looking at a trend, we're not really seeing reality because 2020 was such an odd year. So with Nancy's help, mostly Nancy's work, she put together a tool to help the groups look into their budgets and take a real hard look at what were in those budget lines, so that when it came time for deliberations and you had questions, we would have that level of detail, so we could get real clear on what our expense budgets were, because we knew things were going to be tight. So given that direction, Nancy created this tool, and so we've done several trainings. We've worked individually with departments. Many departments have embraced the database. I myself was helping the District or the Public Defender last week, and I was able to do her operations budget in about two hours. So functionally, I think it's a great tool, but change is also, can be daunting for some. So I'll let Nancy speak to the nuts and bolts, if you didn't have any more questions. Our goal was to provide the detail and also to provide an easier way for the groups to document, because we know going into our system, you have to go through multiple screens, multiple clicks, to get to what you need to spell out that detail in the budget. With the database, it's one spreadsheet. You just fill it in, you put in your stuff, and you let us know, and we load it into the system. So our attempt was to try to simplify things.
Go ahead, Leslie.
So I do have a question for you, Deana. So at this point, if somebody is more comfortable with navigating the system, can they use the system instead of the spreadsheet?
If that's your direction, sure.
Okay.
But we, the other part of putting this database together is, after doing this work, and the managers know what's in their budget, next year, all of that data rolls forward. So when it comes time to do next year's budget, it's all pre-populated.
So you're saying this is, because this is the initial thrust, it's creating more work for everybody. Nancy, did you want to say anything?
Sure. There's a lot of times during the year, during the fiscal year, you ask me for information for people's budgets. Are these items budgeted? Or similar questions like that, as we're going through the payables. I can't always answer those questions for you, because I can't see what's in people's budgets. And there are departments that are already providing the level of detail that we're requesting. Solid Waste does an amazing job, and they have a huge budget. And they take it literally down to the detail. Our own department, we have been providing that level of detail for a number of years. Leanna does an amazing job on our budget. So to take a look at other departments and just say, well, this is our three-year trend, and we spend this much money, I don't think that that is a great way to look at your budget. And I think that you can go into more detail if you stop and think about what makes up these dollar amounts in that three-year trend. Is there a one-time purchase we don't need to include next year? When we give them the opportunity to just come in with a flat budget, there are one-time purchases that are now-
Going forward.
Going forward, in the next year, and the next year after that, and the next year after that. So if this is the one year we actually ask them to take a detailed look into their budget to see what makes up their numbers, I think it's a great thing, but I know that some of the departments, that's very difficult to take a look at details, because they can't anticipate what's coming in the future. So I get that, but we also have contingency for those items as well.
Right. So here's what I would say. There's two issues, I think. Number one, operations, heavy operations departments aren't able to tell you what's in the maintenance budget, because they don't know what's going to break. They don't know how many tires necessarily, you know? And so I understand that. So not having the level of detail for those types of operations, I'm comfortable with. There's just no way to do that.
Right.
And to your point, contingency, that's, you know, an option. The other thing that I was thinking when you were talking is that we have now raised the capital limit from $5,000 to $10,000. This is really going to make budgets look off, because something they would have asked for in capital, which is zero every year, it's going to increase their B-budget. And to your point, if it is a one-time purchase, then I think we should know that. So going next year, that, yes, while everything just populates, they need to go back and realize, okay, I don't need to purchase that same thing this year, so their B-budgets may actually go down next year.
But if they don't track that level of detail-
Correct.
They may not remember next year that they had a one-time purchase.
Well, and what's interesting is that I would almost think that they ought to be, if they're not actually reflecting it to us, providing that level of detail for themselves, because otherwise, how do they come up with a budget? If you're going to buy 500 widgets, how did you get to the figure of 500? Oh, you did it in the past? No, that's not good enough. How did you get to 500? And that's typically the question we don't ask, and maybe we should be. And I think that's what you're both saying.
Right. And level of detail, too. I mean, we stress this in the trainings. Pick a level of detail that makes sense to you. So you have a maintenance budget. You don't know how many tires you're going to need, but you're probably going to need a certain amount of a type of parts. Get a general feel by looking at your spending-
Make some assumptions.
How much that you're going to need. I'm going to need this much to fix my cars. I'm going to need this much to fix my heating units. I'm going to need this much, you know, and estimate. And then maybe a line that says contingency in case I go over. Just some level of detail that makes sense to the user. We're not asking people to go down to, you know, how many pens, how many pencils. That's not the point of this exercise. It's look at what you're spending, and make sure that you put in there what you're spending and what you're going to need.
Precisely.
And I think that most times, and I did this with the Public Defender's budget, I put in what she needed according to what she spent. I looked at last year and what came over, and there were just a couple little tweaks to keep that budget flat. And in one instance, it can't be flat, because there's a price of something going up. But I think that the managers will have a better idea of their operation if they take that deep dive.
Okay.
And we did zero out non-capital items this year. So those items that are between $5,000 and $10,000, they do have to notate in their budget.
Right.
But I also developed a report, an automated report from our finance system, that they can plug in their org set and their account, and see everything from 2018 forward that they charged in that account, so they can get a better idea of what types of things they can anticipate for the future based upon past-
So you're saying they can access the database and use that to build their budget?
Yes, sir.
It's all there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for?
I think Laureen has.
Somebody wanted to, Laureen, please.
So Commissioners, I've been doing the spreadsheet.
By the way, for anybody listening in, Laureen Chaffin is our Principal Planner for Solid Waste. Go right ahead, Laureen.
So I created these spreadsheets clear back, Dave McDowell decided we were going to do zero-based budgets, and we were going to have to do a zero-based budget every three years. Solid Waste has a multimillion-dollar budget. So what I, the reason I created these, to give us the detail, was so that our management team could then look to see what was in each of these lines. I would caution the board that although you're getting this information, it really should be more of a guideline. So when they're, when you have these department heads and people are creating their budget that are saying, I can't tell you, I can't tell you what's going to happen at Solid Waste, what piece of equipment is going to break down, but I do have a line item for these major repairs.
That's fine.
And I also say, I'm going to buy 50 trailer tires. Well, let's say I have to buy more truck tires than I have to buy trailer tires. So again, I caution the board that you don't lock in, and I think that's probably some of the pushback that you're getting, is that they're going to go to this detail. It's their first year. They haven't done this before. They're guessing. So again, it's more of a guideline to determine what it is that you're spending and how you're spending, and then also hands that off to the rest of your management team, so that they know what makes up your budget. It's a, it's a give and a take, and it gives great detail, but again, it is more of a guideline. In our office, it's more like, I budgeted this amount. In the non-capital world, they'll say, I budgeted for this, but we now need this, so I'm going to give up this item, because it covers the cost of-
Fair enough.
So just to throw some, you know, a little bit of reassurance on, I remember how I felt when McDowell said it was a zero-based budget, and it's very daunting when you have to sit and dive into everything that you've got.
Thank you, Laureen. Is there anyone else, any of the department heads that wish to come forward to express their views? No? Okay.
So I think there, it was a little bit more direction was expressed to me, making sure that, okay, B-budgets are flat, however, taking into account that added piece where items were going to be in capital, now they're not, they're going to be in B-budget. We understand that. There's also a couple departments that we have that cannot come in with a flat B-budget, because they're having things that do not come up every year. So I want to reiterate that. So while we say flat, that's, we still have to look at everything that is necessary. So I want to give departments that comfort, that just because we asked for flat B, we understand that you just have to articulate what the issue is. The other thing, let's see, bonuses. So we don't have a bonus policy in place yet, and I think we're really trying to look at being able to fund some type of pay increase. So I'm asking, do we want to have them budget bonuses, knowing that if we get a pay increase, we might take that out, or?
I, go ahead.
I'm generally against bonuses.
I don't have a problem budgeting for them, but I don't think people should take that to mean that we're going to provide them, because again, it's going to depend on what the legislature ultimately decides what that does to our wage increase and our matrix, and then we go from there. So I think to your original point, I'm fine.
Okay. And I won't approve any budget going forward unless we have that policy in place, because I think it's just very important that we follow guidelines and it's not so arbitrary. So.
And then?
Okay.
Okay, so what did, where are we at with the budget input process? Stay the course?
Well, they have an option. They can use the new form, or they can use Logis, but the detail we would really like, and come to your liaison if it's just not possible this year, and if it's a two-year process for you, I'm willing to look at that.
And I guess what, go ahead, Bill, I'm sorry.
I think that's important, though. We're trying not to be rigid, but at the same time, we're trying to be more specific. And once this is implemented, totally by year two going forward, it should be fairly simple to do.
Yeah, and I guess, having been involved in this process, not only here, but in private industry, look, you know, as I think Leslie pointed out, Laureen pointed out, you can't anticipate every expense, but you can make assumptions. So make the assumption and go from there. I'm going to assume that I'm going to need 25 trailer tires. Fine, make that assumption. If it turns out to be more, it's more. You can't know that, because you don't know if anything's going to break down, or flat tires, or whatever. But make the assumption so that you know what you're thinking when you stipulate on what you're asking for. That's probably the easiest way to do it. And for those groups that I liaison with, talk to me. If you have concerns, let's talk about it, so we can get through this together, okay? And then next year, per assurances from both Deana and Nancy, it should be a lot simpler, okay? All right, let's move on. I'm going to go back to item number two. Jody, this is yours. Fernand Lake Natural Area Hazard Fuel Treatment Discussion. Go right ahead, please.
Thank you. The RMO issued two hazard fuel treatment solicitations in January, a 14-acre hand treatment project and a two-acre hand treatment and chipping project, both located in the Fernand Lake Natural Area. We received one response for each project. We reissued the solicitation for the 14-acre project in February with the hope we would receive more than one response. However, we received only one response. North Idaho Landscape and Forestry was the sole respondent for both solicitations.
Okay.
The bid responses were too, the bid responses were too high at the time, so I communicated that to the bidder, and they revised their bid price to an acceptable cost.
Okay.
I'm seeking the board's approval to accept the revised bids for the Idaho Landscape and Forestry.
Okay. Jody, just for clarification, is this grant-funded?
Yes.
Okay.
And is this on the business meeting, Jody?
Tomorrow.
Perfect. Okay.
I just, I just wanted to give you the opportunity, you know, to be able to respond, ask questions, and also, I was told by legal I needed to bring it forward, since I'm looking to accept a revised bid as a sole, sole bidder, sole solicitor.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you. And thanks for going out a second time. Sometimes residents have concern when they only see a single bidder, so thank you. Okay, moving on. Item number four, Jail Healthcare Contract, potential action item. Captain Diet.
Good morning.
Good morning.
About a week ago, I sent the board a packet review. Included in that was an administrative review from the sheriff's office outlining our current medical care provider, CHP, and some shortcomings they've had with our contract, specifically onsite care has been subsidized with telehealth medicine. Those appointments do two things. They are providing a doctor to review the inmate's status, but at the same time, they're utilizing nursing staff that would normally be freed up to do nursing while the doctor's onsite. So we're doubling up our efforts on staffing, which has created burnout for the medical staff that's there. They have complained since August of last year. We lost our HSA, who had been with the county, well, not the county, but contracted with the county for over nine years. She had extensive nursing background and walked away from it, stating that the company, contract company, CHP, was not providing the necessary RNs, LPNs through the agency for replacement of lost staff hours, people didn't show up. They are also to provide a, what's called a PRN, a traveling nurse, that would fill in if regular staff isn't available. All those are required by contract, and they have failed to do that over and over. I have letters in this packet of attachments from their staff, from LPNs, my own staff, talking about really the tragedy that's starting to exist in that medical contract. I'm asking the board to approve this contract that you signed, a 90-day out. We don't have to provide reason for why that contract is being broke at this point. On the heels of that, we have taken bids in the last, in preparation for FY '22. One of the bidders is prepared to take over that contract early, at the end of our 90-day out. They are, they did propose a bid that was roughly $100,000 more than CHP for the upcoming FY '22 contract, and I did make contact with both companies to find out why their bids were where they were. CHP disclosed to me that their bid was made more attractive. It's actually lower than our current contract price. They did that by absorbing some of the costs in their administrative area, just back in Colorado, where they're, some of the executives are taking less money this year to make it more attractive, but I anticipate those costs will come back in over the next year to two years, once they start doing business again. And as you know, our budgets have exceeded where they were slated in the last two years with the contract company. They are shipping out a lot of inmates to Kootenay Health for Care and alternative providers, which should be covered under our contract for most of that care. We review those, but I'm not a medical expert. I rely on them for that. It seems like we are getting short-changed on the contract. The other company, Vital Core, which has pledged in their bid for their price, which I said was 100,000 more, they do have a more robust staffing plan. Same thing, onsite providers and nursing and all that is required. They have a great reputation. I've got letters from Canyon County, who they currently contract with. Their jail commander there gave them very high praise. They've had them for over a year now, ecstatically happy with their work. They also contract in Kansas with several Department of Corrections there, and they've also provided excellent references for what we did as a score on both companies. Vital Core did come out in our scoring quite a bit higher, about 15 percentage points higher as scored by command staff. The pricing was the really only difference, and they have vowed to also look again, they'll take another glance at it when we get into contract negotiations, if they're awarded the bid on tomorrow's agenda, to try to pare some of that down even further.
Okay. Has CHP been informed?
Yes. Not of the cancellation, no. We haven't done that yet. But they've been informed of the ongoing problems all the way through.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a second HSA now who's brought the same problems forward again, and it's not going away. So our fear is that if we continue to sign again with a new bid price, that we're just going to see this repeating over and over again.
Okay, so with the, with the replacement, you said they were about $100,000 more?
Right.
That they were going to review their bid or take another look at it?
The bid has been reviewed. Yeah, they were actually-
Okay, go ahead.
Close to 300,000 more initially.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But would it be fair to say that Company A isn't really fulfilling our needs, and so Company B is higher, but they're going to fulfill our needs?
Correct.
So to me, it's-
And at a greater, at a greater value, too. They do have a more robust staffing plan that does better coverage, in my mind.
So you don't see any risk if we go ahead and approve the contract tomorrow, not having yet notified CHP that we're done?
Correct.
I'd see risks if we continue and don't provide the kind of care that we've contracted for.
I agree. And David Ferguson's here to speak, if you'd like, David, about any risk that might be involved with that. I, we've discussed it at length.
Do we need a formal motion today to authorize the 90-day letter?
We have, I understand it's on the agenda for tomorrow.
Yes, it is.
And then this was a discussion mostly about informing the board about the relative benefits or weaknesses of CHP versus Vital Core, and it's allowed the board to make a decision, I think, at our future business meeting, but it sounds like that needs to happen fairly quickly. So I think that termination, the 90-day out clause is a no-fault 90-day out clause. I think that's what the board could approve tomorrow, because that's what's on the agenda. And then perhaps even the following week, the board could approve it.
Tomorrow is the award bid?
It is?
Yes.
We'd have to do both in the same meeting?
We do have an action, we do have the action item today.
Well, there's an action item-
Yeah, we've indicated-
-for the 90-day letter.
Well, what it says is jail healthcare contract.
That's our current one, yep.
But it doesn't specifically say approve termination letter?
No.
No. It just, it just says-
I think you can go ahead and do that today and ratify it.
And then ratify it tomorrow?
Okay. And it's actually under 24 hours, so we could get it added anyway, so.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Do you know what the GIN says?
No, that's all right. It says, yeah, jail healthcare contract, action item.
Sounds like there's a way to get it done.
Okay.
All right.
Go.
I move that we approve the 90-day outletter for the, as outlined today.
For the current provider. I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Aye, and the motion is carried to cancel the contract with the current provider. Thank you, Captain Diet.
Mr.?
Okay. Let's move on to the pending item status review, because that's pretty fast. And so that's item number five. Okay, optional form of county government. Bill?
We've got a meeting tomorrow morning to discuss the formation of the Citizens Study Commission.
Commission, yeah. Okay, so what I did is, based on our previous meeting, I subjected it to legal review. We went back and forth, Dave Ferguson and I, and made some changes, largely reducing it to bring it more into conformance with Idaho Code, because Idaho Code actually affords the commission much greater latitude than we thought possible, okay? And so I'll bring that forward tomorrow.
Do you have a clean copy?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
The only reason I didn't provide it, remember the last time I tried to do something and he jumped on me? Dave did, because he said I shouldn't be providing anything ahead of the open meeting.
Then how are we supposed to review it? We get the business meeting packet ahead of time.
Look, I understand. When we did, what was it, the first draft?
I'll take it.
No, that's right. When I asked for comments-
Yes.
So that we could take them to the meeting, and then Dave opined, and he said, no, no, you're in potential violation of the open meeting.
Correct. We can't do comments, but just having the actual document-
Right, yeah, I can provide you, that's no deliberation, and that's no, well, I wouldn't think so. Yeah, I've got it. I'll send it to you this afternoon.
Thank you.
No problem. I'm glad you asked. Okay. Are we okay there?
Yeah.
Facilities expansion.
Yeah, so the next two to three weeks, the changes will be made from last week's meeting with all the stakeholders, and I guess doors and walls and those kinds of things are going to be put into the plans, and so we'll just keep a lookout for when that's done.
You know, it was interesting, I spoke to one of, what was Judge Christensen, on his way out after the meeting last week? He said, we've already outgrown it.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, well. Okay. So much for that. Anything else on that? Pac Airport lease?
Haven't heard back from Stephen. I meant to ask this morning, and I did not. I meant to ask this morning, and I did not.
Okay, so follow up with Stephen. 1A and B, audio upgrade. Nancy, you gave us some information on that. Well, we approved the contract. Work to begin.
Their group is starting on the engineering now, and then we'll have a kind of kickoff meeting to go with the specific term.
Okay.
Okay, and for everyone's benefit, again, that's to completely revamp the audio/video facilities in this room, so that we can pretty much do anything. Anybody speaking will be heard over a central mic, so everything will be, shall we say, more professional? Okay. Financial snapshot?
Next update?
That's next week, is that right?
April 5th.
April 5th? Oh, it's 2nd.
It's, no, it's the first Monday. Yeah, first Monday.
Valid bond language, Leslie?
Yep, we just, everything's kind of slowed way down. I'll have a town hall on March 31st to start talking to the public about a bond. And that's about it.
Okay. Building financing, and that pretty much ties right into it, right?
Yeah. And then state of the county, I put on here so we could keep that in the forefront of our mind. And I think that's about a month away.
Yes.
And I'm just planning on talking about the new building, the bond, and my liaisons.
Got it. Okay. So we should probably, maybe by next week, each of us, Bill, you and I also come up with what it is we're going to be addressing for the meeting. So you had new building, bond, oh, and liaison. Okay, I got it. All right, then. That's it for the stat, that's it for pending items. So we have a guest, and his name is Les Wigan. Les, I'm going to let you introduce yourself. Bill is sponsoring this, so Bill, get as close as you can, yeah, absolutely.
You're on public comment now, right?
Well, yes. Well, it's actually Bill's item. You're going to speak to it, and you can go right into public comment. We'll actually ask for more public comment when you're done, but go right ahead.
Hold a mic or phone close to you, so everybody can hear you well.
You're actually an agenda item. Go ahead.
Okay, I want to start out by saying that my wife and I moved to Corleone in 2009. I was a former Whitman County Commissioner for 12 years in COFAC. We had a 45,000 residents. We had a $26 million budget. And I know all of you, you're doing a good job. But I want to mention that I supported Jim Brennan for clerk. I supported Rick Curry when he was... The first thing I did when I got to Corleone, I came to the courthouse just to see where the commissioner's office was, and Rick Curry was the commissioner. I knew him pretty good. I knew John Green. I wrote a letter for Bill Brooks. I wrote a letter for Mark Eberlin. I know Chris Philios. I know Leslie now. You're all doing a good job. And I also wrote a letter for Mary Suzanne. So I've been involved in politics since '62. And I want to add a little more. I was friends with Tom Foley. I don't know if you guys know who he is. But he went on from Spokane to Congress. He ended up being Speaker of the House.
Oh, yeah, okay.
He was a Spokane kid who did good. I worked with him in the '60s, and when I was on the Wheat Commission, I watched him go through the chairs, and I saw him be Speaker of the House. And here we have the Speaker of the House, who helped Fairchild, who helped build the Snake River dams, and he gets defeated. Spokane and Whitman County supported Tom Foley. Here we have the Speaker of the House in Spokane, the 5th district, and the voters voted him out. I just think that was gross, but anyway.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that I've talked to Bill, all of you. Being a commissioner in Whitman County was one of the fun things in my life. It was, I got to meet a lot of commissioners, a lot of senators, a lot of, I met two presidents. It was, and I know you guys enjoy your job. But the reason, I guess I'm, I've talked to Bill a couple of times about being a county commissioner. Maybe I have with you guys. But Leslie, the other night, when you were talking to us, one thing that I picked up was that you, the three of you commissioners, can't talk to each other outside of this room.
About anything county-related.
Open public meetings.
That's true.
This came through Whitman County, and they told us we couldn't go to lunch together. And we couldn't ride in a car to a banquet or to a meeting. And that's, to me, was, I couldn't buy it. We couldn't buy it, the commissioners couldn't buy it. So what we did, we have workshops at 8:00 in the morning, and it goes to 10:00. And then at 10:00, we do our business meeting, what you're doing here. We talk to elected officials, we talk to department heads, we talked about gravel roads, we talked about equipment, auctions, all those things you guys do. But between 8:00 and 10:00 on Mondays, we talked, we call it a workshop. You put it on the agenda, you share with the press, and you can have a workshop and talk about whatever you want to talk about. And that's the way we did it.
What about things that weren't on the agenda? Could you talk about those also?
No, it has to be on the agenda. We talked to the sheriff, we talked to the assessor, we talked to all of them. It's a year-round, year-round project. 8:00 was always the workshop.
But there's an agenda, so it's not really a free-for-all, a free-form discussion?
Yeah, usually a workshop, you talk to the public works director, you talk to the landfill guy, or whatever. But you don't make any decisions, and they don't vote on it.
No deliberations during that time?
No, 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 you just talk. You know, we had meetings with the board commissioners, and we didn't make any decisions.
Did you agree with all your commissioners all the time?
Well, in 12 years, I voted no four times.
Oh, so you almost always did?
No, I only voted for and no for.
Okay.
No, we had, we had good commissioners. I had, I shared with five commissioners. Four of those commissioners got defeated because they, they didn't... I didn't think they represented their constituents. I had one, one of my best friends came behind me. And he went in there, and he voted for a sales tax and a property tax in his fourth year. And he went out to campaign that fall, and they just toasted him. I mean, you don't do that. And he said to me, he says, "Les, I should have voted with you." I says, "No, you vote for the constituents that you support." You know, you don't play games, and I'll vote, you vote. We never did that, but I told him, "You don't vote with me. You vote for the people in St. John and Endicott and Paulman and Garfield."
Were these workshops recorded?
No. All our meetings are recorded, but not the workshops. And we had the finance director in there, you know? And the Superior Court judge would come in and talk about the court court.
We couldn't do that.
We just, we, you know, we had the best assessor in the state of Washington. And we had a good sheriff.
But when you and I talked about this in the past, recent past, you said that this helped the flow of ideas between the commissioners?
Yeah, well, when they said we couldn't go to lunch together, walking down to town COFAC, you know, that upset me, that we can't, you know, we're friends. We had a $26 million budget. And if we can't make decisions by, you know, stopping us from getting in a car and going to Garfield for a meeting, it's ridiculous. But anyway, if you have any questions, I got a phone number for you for the secretary at Whitman County. I talked to her Saturday, Friday, and told her I was coming in here to talk to you about workshops. But you guys need to work together and talk about it. And your job, all three of your jobs, is to convince the other two to go with you, whether it's you, anyway. Your job is to convince them to go with you. It's just like a legislator and a legislature. You gotta get, you know, your job is to get three votes for, or three votes against, or a mix of those.
And sometimes your fellow commissioners had a good idea that you didn't have, right?
Sometimes, yeah.
Don't say never.
Yeah, yeah.
Question?
I don't know what you said, Bill.
Question? I said, I said, the two other, or four other commissioners that you worked with, you got some good ideas from them during these workshops?
Yeah, yeah. And we wrote letters and stuff. We went to conventions like you guys.
Okay.
We had a good, we had a good team, had five really good commissioners.
So how many times, how often did you meet formally, formally?
Every Monday morning at 10:00.
Okay, so you, you had one meeting per week, is that it? One workshop per week. You said it's...
We had workshops from 8:00 to 10:00.
Okay.
As we needed them.
And then your business meeting?
And we put it on the agenda. You should telepress, and your agenda's posted in the courthouse, so people can know what you're going to talk about.
How many other meetings did you have, though, per week?
Not as many as you have.
Well, I know, but can you give me an idea?
Yeah, five to seven to 10.
I mean, did you have set hours?
On our workshops?
No, 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 forget the workshop for the moment. Put the workshop aside. How often did you meet formally as a board?
Every Monday from 10:00 to, when we were through in the afternoon.
Okay, and the other four days is...
We didn't meet, Monday was what you're doing right now.
Okay.
No, we didn't meet every day. Every Monday at 10:00, our board's there.
Okay.
And if you missed, you were in your office, and then it was 10:00, and you didn't go in, they'd start the meeting without you.
Okay, so from 8:00 to 10:00, you had the workshop, and from 10:00 for the rest of the workday, you were available?
Yeah.
Or had meetings, other meetings?
We had special meetings.
Okay.
So it sounds like kind of what we do now. This is our workshop, our status update on Mondays, and our business meetings on Tuesday afternoon.
Yeah.
And that's what we do now. Let me put this in perspective. In 2017, we took account. That was my first year in office. And I don't, I can give you the, this number's close to within maybe 5 or 10. I had 370 board-level meetings. Do the math.
How many?
370. That's about eight a week. I had approximately 27 meetings with individual constituents, and then there were other, you know, chamber meetings, things of that nature. At this point, doing our job, even within a standard 40-hour week, is getting impossible. You said, Les, that you had five commissioners?
Three.
Oh, where? Oh, I thought it was five, I'm sorry. That came from me.
The only ones that...
Oh, I'm sorry.
The only ones that had more were Pierce County, King County.
Oh, well, yeah, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
But most of the commissioners are three.
Three, okay. That's why they told you you couldn't...
Yeah.
That's why you had the same problem we do, okay.
So, you know, you guys work hard. I forgot to say that I would. I work hard for, well, for us, to run for sheriff. I know a lot of, I don't know all the elected officials or appointment heads, but I'm interested in politics, I follow you in the press. I watch you on me, I probably watch you 10 times on my phone. I like doing that. But I've talked to Bill a couple of years now. And I've told him, you know, workshop deals, so that's why.
Well, and I think, as Leslie pointed out, that's why we do the status update every week. If something does come up that requires a workshop, then we can handle it as such. Leslie's going to be, I guess you could say, chairing a workshop on the Spokane River shortly, because that's coming up. But we typically do that within the pending item status review. And it's open, and we do it every Monday.
Yeah. That's all I got to say, I guess. You guys, I don't want to amputate your job at all.
Thank you, Les. Really appreciate your time and your service, by the way. Thank you.
Sandy, anybody on the line have any comments?
Hi.
Go right ahead.
Hi, I have a comment.
I'm sorry, who is it?
Hi, this is Sandy White, I have a comment.
Sandy?
Yes.
Go ahead, Sandy.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to, to just again say that I have serious hesitation against the alternate form of government that's being worked on. And I would really love to see the Second Amendment county ordinance come back for discussion. So that's what I have to say today.
Thank you, anyone else? I guess that's it, then. Okay. So the time is 11:44, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you again, Les.